Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to our Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting. It's a very short agenda on this one for October 18th. Call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, that's a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? The agenda's been approved. Item three is approving the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's DMMHA revised payment standards for the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program, Board Communication Number 21-432. Any thoughts, discussion, or emotion?
Move item three.
Item three's been moved. Any other comment? Ask everybody to vote, please.
Your Honor, that's seven zero. Motion carries.
All right. And the last item is a motion to adjourn.
Um, move adjourn.
It's been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Municipal Housing Agency meeting has been adjourned.
Yeah. It took a minute.
All right. We're going to start our council meeting at, right, 5:00 straight up. Before we start our council meeting, I quickly want to let everyone know that due to the increased community transmission of COVID-19 in Polk County, we've implemented a face covering requirement in all of our city buildings. The requirement applies to both staff and visiting public and includes attendance at council meetings. If you do not have a face covering, one is going to be provided. So, the public is hereby notified that the City Council will not tolerate disruption of its business meetings. Persons waiting to attend this meeting are reminded of the following. We welcome germane comments from the public at the appropriate time, but this is a council business meeting, and the council needs to conduct the people's business, and council has rules that are validly adopted under Iowa law, and those rules will be followed. Anyone engaging in disruptive conduct in the council chambers of the great hall will result in those being disruptive, being ordered to leave the building, and being denied read amendments for the remainder of the day. No person will be permitted to stand in the council chamber during council sessions between the audience seats or on the seats and the council members, except the persons addressing the council at the speaker's microphone and only after being recognized by the mayor. All persons desiring to address the council may do so only when recognized, and the council reserves the right to limit the speaker's time in the order in which the speakers may address the council. Under Section 2-70, the city code, it is illegal to interrupt any person who is addressing the council, except by a council member, and is illegal to disrupt the council meeting. Everyone in attendance has First Amendment rights, and any disruptive conduct by one person or a group impinges on the rights of others, so disruptive comment will not be tolerated. If the meeting is disrupted, the public speaking portion of the meeting may be moved to the next in-person meeting, which is not disrupted. Those who disrupt the meeting will not be called on during the meeting and will be ordered to leave the building and may be cited or arrested for disorderly conduct, trespass, or interfering with the good order of the meeting or other applicable charges. So, having said that and read that, let's call our meeting to order, and I'll ask clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right. Item I is amending the procedural rules of the Des Moines City Council. We have had those put out, and I know that there may be some suggestions for a further amendment, but let me just quickly read to everyone what this says. Manner of addressing the council. At each regular council meeting, if any requests to speak have been received, a person desiring to address the council shall step to the podium, state his or her name, address, and group affiliation, if any, and clearly speak into the microphone. In lieu of providing their address at the time of speaking at the meeting, a person may provide the city clerk with their address and writing to the clerk no later than 3:00 PM on the day of the council meeting and no sooner than 10 days before the meeting at which they desire to speak. If the person has provided their address, as the clerk is required herein, and the clerk has verified the address, then the person desiring to speak shall only be required to give their name, zip code, and ward of residency at the time of speaking. If the meeting is entirely electronic, the person shall use the prescribed method for comments, but shall not speak on the same item more than once. If the meeting is not entirely electronic, then only those persons in attendance at the physical location of the meeting will be permitted to speak and only in accordance with these rules and the city code. The person shall follow these rules and the direction of the presiding officer. So, hopefully, that helps sort out some of the worries that some folks had, especially when they're speaking. So, any council members want to make any comments regarding that? I know that a couple of our council members had a couple of comments. Carl, did you want to?
I think Josh is going to.
Okay, Josh?
Well, I think this is a positive step. I guess I would prefer to broaden this a little bit and allow for the same rule to apply during the public hearing portion, with the exception of when we need to know a party of interest, where you have to have a specific address for that purpose. But for the members of the public who come and speak at a hearing, I think that the same rule can apply, and I think that's a better rule. So, my hope is that we would expand it a little bit, and I had suggested some language. I think I'd sent that to Carol, but I'd be happy to read that language if folks are comfortable with it. I think that's a better approach, but I support the change as well, because I think it's a step in the right direction.
Okay. I think I've got a copy, Josh, of yours. I mean, do we want to read the whole thing?
Sure. I think that's probably better from a process perspective, so the entire council knows it and the public knows it.
Okay. So, if you want me to do that, I believe this is yours, and so, Carl's. Okay. Rule 28, manner of addressing the council. At each regular council meeting, if any requests to speak have been received, a person desiring to address the council shall step to the podium, state his or her name, address, and group affiliation, if any, and speak clearly into the microphone. In lieu of providing a current residential address at the time of speaking during the non-public hearings items at the meeting, a person may provide one's address via email, written mail, or other writing to the city clerk on or after the date 10 days preceding the meeting prior to the 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting at which the request or desires to speak. If the person has provided a current address to the city clerk, as required herein, and the city clerk has verified the address, then the person desiring to speak shall only be required to provide one's name, zip code, and ward residency at the time of speaking. At all public hearings, however, each speaker at each hearing that is a party in interest shall be required to provide one's name, address, and group affiliation. If any. All other speakers may, if they have previously provided a current address to the city clerk, only be required to provide one's name, zip code, and ward residency at the time of speaking. If the meeting is entirely electronic, the person shall use the prescribed method for comments, but shall not speak on the same item more than once. If the meeting is not entirely electronic, then only those persons in attendance at the physical location of the meeting will be permitted to speak and only in accordance with these rules and the city code. The person shall follow these rules and the direction of the presiding officer at all times. So, that being read, that's the amended version. Any comments by council, and then any motion?
I would just say it's consistent, probably more consistent if the public hearing only needs to be the people that were within the area. The other part then becomes consistent with the rest of what we're saying. So, I could support it. I don't think it's that different.
I don't think I will support the change. I want, when there are hearing items, just giving your name and zip code isn't quite enough. Like, we have something on the agenda tonight that involves people that live in Des Moines and people that live in Polk County unincorporated, and they, they could just give their zip code as 50317, but they're not Des Moines proper residents. So, for hearing items, I want to hear, I want to hear their name and their address.
Just to clarify, it does require your ward of residency, so if your zip code is in the county and you don't have a ward of residency, you would have to declare that. So, you would know if someone is a Des Moines resident, what ward, and that they have a Des Moines address, which I think accomplishes what you were hoping to accomplish.
Yeah, that.
I'll move the item with the changes, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody?
The last item that you, early in that version that you read, I think there were his or her, and if we could just say one's address. At least, that's my recollection of.
Yeah. In that first rather elongated sentence, it says, "Shall step to the podium, state his or her address," and you just want to change that to one's?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that modification acceptable? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. It's been moved. Voting in progress.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Let's move on. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move, Your Honor.
It has been moved, and I will say that under the consent agenda, well, I'll bring that up when we do the consent agenda. So, any discussion? All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Item passes. It's moved to item three, approving the consent agenda. These tonight are items three through 40, and I'll just make the one comment that item 15 has been withdrawn, which was setting a date of hearing. The engineering department requested the item be withdrawn at this time. So, 15 is out.
I'm sorry. If you have nothing else, I'll move.
Okay. Item three has been moved. Are there any, clerk, any request anybody made about any of the consent items?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Hearing none, then.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. That takes us to the hearing items. So, tonight, quickly, I'll try to go over the rules on this. For the hearing items, this evening, we have five zoning items, 47 to 51. We also have a vacation and real estate conveyance hearings, one competitive process redevelopment hearing, and one public improvement hearing, and several loan agreement hearings. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are, again, 47 to 51, we will hear from the parties in interest first and then the general public. The parties in interest for the zoning items include only the applicant and for the rezoning and those living within 250 feet to be rezoned to whom the city has sent notices. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. To aid in recognizing the parties in interest to the zoning items to speak, I will ask everyone else to not step to the microphone unless you are the applicant or live within that 250 feet and received a mailed notice of the rezoning. Anyone who approaches the mic before it is their time will be compared with the mailing list, and if not on that list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. So, please wait until I call for the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on for the remainder of the meeting and will be required to leave the building. After all the parties in interest have been called, the general public comment at not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes will be called upon for germane public comment unless the hearing has ended sooner for failure to make germane comments or when the comments cease. For other hearings this evening, any interested party may make germane comments and not to exceed, again, that one minute to a maximum of five minutes per hearing unless the hearing has ended sooner for failure again to make the germane comments or comments cease. As a reminder on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, specifications, form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate and low bidder designation will be considered germane, and all other comments will be considered non-germane. For the dismissals, no public comment will be had at this meeting. So, we will start out with item 41. Item 41 is on a conveyance of a vacated north-south alley right-of-way located west of and adjoining 4104 Amherst Street to True Bible Baptist Church as part of the Hamilton Drainstorm Sewer Improvements Project. Germane comments from the general public. We'll ask if anyone would like to speak. One minute per person. Anyone want to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none, could we have a motion? Item 41.
I will move item 41.
Any comments? I'll ask everybody to vote, please.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 42, on the vacation of a portion of Cohen Park located north of and adjoining 1106 Scott Avenue, and approval of a land exchange agreement with the Des Moines Climate Controlled Self-Storage LLC. Council Communication Number 21-447A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and we'll again open it up and see if anybody has any germane comments regarding this exchange of land.
Seeing none, Your Honor. I'll move item 42, 42A, and waive the second and third reading pursuant to Rule 42.
42A?
42A? Thank you. How come I can never remember that?
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 43, which is on vacation in Parkland adjacent to Waveland Golf Course located south of and adjoining University Avenue, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Anyone want to make any comment on that germane to this issue?
Thank you, Mayor County. I'd like to speak to this. I've been part of the fundraising effort to convert this small area, which some people thought was a vacant lot right outside the Waveland Park, Waveland Golf entrance. This was actually the turnaround for the Waveland Trolley, and if this motion passes, this will be another step in getting this project accomplished. This will feature information about the Waveland Trolley Loop, which was built in 1901 as part of opening the Waveland Golf Course. However, it will also feature all of the streetcars network and the inner urban line that was part of Des Moines. And we have raised just right at $300,000 for this small feature. The Waveland Park Neighborhood Association will be doing a lot of the maintaining work on this, as will the Waveland Golf Course team also. So, with that, I'd like to move, when appropriate, 42, 42A, and would like to.
43?
I'm sorry. 43, 43A pursuant to Rule 42A.
Move to waive the second and third.
Yeah. Waive the second and third reading. Yeah. According to the waiver rule, so.
Okay. Any other comment?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Voss for his work on this. I mean, this is a great project. It highlights the history of transit in our community and a corridor that is a really important transit corridor today, and it's also really been great to see how the neighborhood has come, has sort of rallied around this project. That Neighborhood Association has gotten a lot more active over the course of this project, and I think that's a great positive. So, thanks for your work on this and look forward to seeing the final result.
Well, and I think we, if we can get the other approvals, we'll have a groundbreaking sometime roughly before Thanksgiving, we hope so. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Motion's been made.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 44 is on the vacation of the north-south alley right-of-way located west of and adjoining 101013th Street in a conveyance to Joppa Cheatham Park LLC for $25. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Joppa and requires six votes. Ask anybody that would like to make any germane comments to do so at this time. Counsel, any comments on this?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to move item 44, 44A, and 44B.
Okay. Item's been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven zero. Motion carries.
Item 45, which is on the issuance of a corrected quitclaim deed conveying excess city property located west of and adjoining 2003 Center Street to David A. Clausen and Margaret J. Clausen trustees of the David A. Clausen and Margaret J. Clausen revocable trust, family trust, dated October 21st of 2003. Any germane comments on this one?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I will move item 45.
Item's been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 46 is dismissing the hearing on the competitive bid process for sale and redevelopment on 503 Southeast 12th Street in the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project area and redevelopment proposal from the Des Moines Climate Controlled Self-Storage LLC. Mark Bowdenstadt is the owner. This item was continued from September 13th, 2021. Council Communication Number 21-436. Again, this is dismissing the hearing.
I'll move item 46, Your Honor.
Item's been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 47 is on a request from Mid-American Energy Company. Ryan Stanbury is the officer for property located at 2399 East County Line Road along the south side of East County Line Road in Warren County to amend the plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from business par. the future land use classification from business park to industrial, and to rezone the property from EX-V mixed-use district to I-2 industrial district to allow modification of the existing electrical utility service center, and to allow for request of a conditional use from the zoning board of adjustment for above-ground storage of flammable liquids, which is interpreted as an intensive fabrication and production use, and for a junk and salvage yard use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. First, parties in interest, we would ask, that's the applicant or those that live within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, and they will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second, we will ask for germane comments of the general public, but let's ask first, parties in interest. Any parties in interest? Mid-American Energy or anyone within that 250 feet? Seeing none, let's ask if there's any germane comments to be made by the general public on this Mid-American proposal. All right, seeing none.
I'll move item 47, Your Honor, and 47A, and waive the second and third reading pursuant to section 42?
A.
42A?
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
48 is on a request from Mid-American Energy Company. Ryan Stanbury is the officer for property located in the vicinity of 2400 East County Line Road along the north side of East County Line Road in Polk County to amend the plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to business park, and to rezone the property from N-2B neighborhood district to EX-mixed-use district to allow the property be developed for a storage, distribution, and wholesaling use, data center, and warehouse, and office use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, we're going to ask if there's any parties in interest, either the applicant or those within 250 feet of the property, to be rezoned. Are there any of those folks in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll ask if there's any germane comments to be made from the general public again on this Mid-American Energy request.
Yeah, so I guess I'd just like to talk about here with what Mid-American has been up to lately in the community.
Okay, we need your, we need your, we need your name in.
Zip code and Ward.
Zip code and Ward.
My name's Taylor Weber. My pronouns are he/him, and I'm in Ward 3, 50315.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so as it relates to Mid-America, so Mid-American Energy, I'm sure many of you are aware as customers, notified everyone saying there's going to be price hikes this year potentially, and issues that are going to be hard for a lot of people to pay, especially as we're continuing throughout a pandemic. So what I would encourage us to do is maybe not work so closely with organizations like Mid-American Energy, who don't actually have the residents of Des Moines in mind, when it comes to items like changing zoning for their corporate interests, and instead focus on changing zoning laws that are forcing us to not solve community problems, like having community fridges throughout neighborhoods, and making sure that we're serving the needs of the community opposed to large corporations.
Okay.
I'll move item 48, 48A, and waive the second and third reading pursuant to rule 42A.
Why isn't that, okay. Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 49 is on a request from Israel Chavez for property located at 1209 East 16th Street to rezone property from MX-1 mixed-use district to N-3A neighborhood district to allow construction of a one-household dwelling. A is the first consideration of this ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Israel Chavez, the owner, and requires six votes. Again, I'll ask, are there any parties in interest here? Either Israel Chavez or anyone living within 250 feet of this request? All right, let's open it up. Are there any germane comments from the general public on this? All right, seeing none. Any thoughts on item 49?
I will move item 49, 49A, and 49B.
All right, item's been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 50 is on a request from Kenyon Hill Ridge LLC. Dean Quirk is the officer for review and approval of the First Amendment to the Ruby Rose Ridge PUD Conceptual Plan for property located in the vicinity of 2401 East 50th Court to allow the development of a 6.27 acre area C with approximately 65 housing units within approximately 11 rowhouse residential structures. Again, let's ask the parties in interest, is the applicant here, or anyone living within 250 feet of this request? All right, seeing none, I will ask then, are there any germane comments from the general public to be made on this item? All right, seeing none. Any thoughts on item 50, counsel?
Hearing none, I would just like to make a couple of comments about item 50. And if counsel remembers back in 2018, I pulled out my old council communication. It was in 2018, we approved this, this PUD into the city of Des Moines, and he brought the, he was bringing the PUD forward at that time, had several neighborhood meetings. I attended those, and then in January of 2021, we conditionally approved the final plat. This is made up of single-family homes and townhomes. And I spoke to, spoke to the developer today. Just want to remind everybody, what they were approved for was up to 75 townhomes. This amendment is reducing that down to 65. So they want a little less density. They're going to make the townhomes a little bit bigger. So that's, that's a good thing. That, that should calm the fears of that, what some of the neighbors. I read the comments at the recent plan and zoning meeting, and there were comments from people who did not live in the city. They live in unincorporated Polk County, and some of the people that live in the, in the copper woods development. But I'm very confident this is, this is good for our community, and it will provide new homes. So with that, I will move item 50. Just moving item 50.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 51 is on a request from NMDP Holdings LLC. Adam Peterson is president for property located at 3312 East Granger Avenue to amend the plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from business park to industrial, and to rezone the property from EX-mixed-use district to I-2 industrial district to allow an expansion of existing operations. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and again, let's ask, are there any parties in interest out there, and we'd ask you to step forward. This would be the applicant or those living within 250 feet.
Mayor, counsel. Angie Funku, I'm the owner's rep for NMDP, so just here if you guys have any questions. But we're just purely trying to rezone for a future expansion in accordance with plan DSM.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. All right, second, let's ask if there's any germane comments from the general public on this request from NMDP. Seeing none?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 51, 51A, and waive the second and third reading accordance to rule 42A.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item 52, these are items related to the redevelopment of the Crescent Chevrolet Building as follows. A, the first consideration of an ordinance vacating segments of 16th Street right-of-way and Linden Street right-of-way, generally bounded by High Street and Ingersoll Avenue, and 15th Street and 17th Street. B is a final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Harold Olson Douglas, the Development Services Director, and requires six votes. C is a hearing on the competitive process for sale of land and redevelopment of the Crescent Chevrolet Building in the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project Area and redevelopment proposal from the Kraus Plus affiliate KG Store 543 LLC. Counsel communication number 21-457. Counsel, any comments on this one? Let's open it up and see if there's any germane comments from the general public regarding this redevelopment of the Crescent Chevrolet Building.
Do I have to do it again?
Yep.
Taylor Weber, Ward 3, 50315. So there's a lot packed into this, but from, from what I'm understanding, we're giving some tax incentives in the realm of valued at $3 million. Is that accurate? And we're giving that to this, this company, developer, that also we're saying we're having a relationship with when it comes to the Gateway District and that sort of stuff. I think it's, you know, super, super problematic. That's a lot of money to be giving to a developer just to give tax incentives, even if it's over the course of time. And then it looks like on top of it, we're actually giving them the property itself in terms of developing it for around $700-some thousand. So again, I think there's a lot of things going on in this city that could use that kind of money and that kind of relationship with you guys and getting those kind of incentives. And what I don't think is the company that needs that, are construction companies that we're going to continue more and more pouring more money into as we gentrify different parts of town, so.
Any other comment? Seeing none. Any comment by counsel? See what?
A and B have to pass first before the direction.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move item 52, 52A, 52B, and 52C.
I think we have to do A and B first, and then vote on C separate.
Oh, okay, then I'll move item 52A and 52B.
All right.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
You can move C now, right?
Yes.
I will move item 52C.
Right, item 52C has been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, item 53 is on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $534,000 for the purpose of purchasing certain TASER certification bundle equipment and materials. Counsel communication number 21-456. We'll ask if anybody in the audience want to make germane comments on this item?
Would it work to just pull it off if you want? I got it.
Okay.
Peyton Schumaker, 50310, Ward 1. I don't know why we're giving so much money to the Des Moines Police Department all the time. I really think that we need to be rethinking how we're distributing the money that our city has, the city budget. Way too much of it is allocated for the Des Moines Police Department, and then we have to take out loans to also, you know, get things for the Des Moines Police Department. They don't need more tasers so that they can taze people and terrorize the community more. So I really don't think that you need to be giving any of this money or getting a loan for the Des Moines Police Department.
All right.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, 50309, and I live in Ward 3. Yeah, on this one, it's about $700, and loans are maybe taking out for the Des Moines Police Department for tasers. I think that's inappropriate to take out even more loans for departments that already have such a big budget, especially this morning. I know we were talking about, or you all were talking about debt management and how much debt the city is already in. But I think sometimes it does make sense to go into debt for the right things, like the fire department, which is understaffed. And it's just concerning to me to see we're taking out multiple loans in this meeting to give police even more gadgets and weapons, but there's nothing on this agenda for like fire department staffing. It just really shows priorities. And same with mental health services as well. They're bad in Iowa jails, and they're bad at the police department here. The Des Moines Police Department just does not have really any mental health services that they use, and that needs to change. And so I just think this money is too much and shows misplaced priorities.
Riley Wilson, Ward 3, 50312. I also think it's kind of ridiculous that we're giving more money to the Des Moines Police Department when what we should be doing obviously is taking away all of their resources, their money, making sure that they don't have gadgets in their hands like this for the sole purpose of just injuring and torturing civilians. I think it's ridiculous that we're buying them brand-new tasers, especially when they don't really seem to use them. In the case of the Des Moines Police Officer who shot that woman, who was having a mental health crisis or something, but there was a perfectly non-lethal option available to that officer, I'm sure, already, without spending this money, and instead he chose to shoot her and send her to the hospital and, you know, maybe kill her. Des Moines Police Department is an out-of-control, unaccountable, violent gang, and they don't need this. We don't need this. Our money doesn't need to go to this. You should strike this and take all of their money away instead of doing this. And fire Scott Sanders. Fire Dana Winger.
Hi, Lea Plath. I live in Ward 3, 50311. I hope you all can step outside of your privilege here today and recognize that this is an excessive amount of money going to a violent police force. I think of Dante Wright, who in Minnesota, not too far from here, was killed by a cop who was pulling out what they thought was a taser, but it was a gun, and they, they killed him. So, and that we see with the shooting last week, that things like that can happen here, and I don't want blood on any of your hands. I see community safety through the mutual aid projects here in Des Moines. I see community all the time. This is not it. This is not the safety that Des Moines needs. And I hope you all can realize that there is a better Des Moines possible without the Des Moines Police Department.
Taylor Weber, 50315, Ward 3. Yeah, I mean, echoing everything that's been said, this is a large amount of money, period. Again, we just talked about giving $700,000 away to a corporation that's a developer, and now here we're taking out loans- and now here we're taking out loans for that amount that could have been covered. So again, just priorities of the city seem very backwards, let alone the public safety stuff that is the most important aspect of this. This, giving this money at this time is screaming of a lack of accountability in light of all the recent issues that the police department has been having, not only in shooting a community member recently, but in the issues with sexual assault allegations, sexual harassment within the department, and racist, and targeting our minority communities specifically. It's something that's super problematic, especially considering what the makeup of the council looks like that is enacting this type of support for this department.
All right, that completes our five minutes of input. Do we have a motion?
I'll move item 53, Your Honor.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 54 is on a proposition to authorize a loan agreement in the principal amount not to exceed $1,760,000 for the purchase, purpose of purchasing certain body-worn camera equipment and related services. Council Communication Number 21-441. Let's ask if there's any germane comments on this item.
Hello, again, do I have to say my name and everything again? Payton Schumaker, 50310, Ward 1. Again, I think it's ridiculous that we're taking out a loan of a million dollars, over a million dollars, to give to the Des Moines Police Department to get body cam footage, body cams, whatever. Like, they don't need this money. They already have body cameras that they don't use properly, so why would we give them more money to get more body cams that they're not going to use properly? It really doesn't make any sense. You're just taking out more loans, getting the city into more debt, and it's ridiculous when your police force is just going to continue to terrorize the community. You saw them arrest me on that chair that I'm sitting on right now and drag me out of the council chambers. So I don't see why you feel the need to keep giving them more and more money, keep taking out loans to give them more and more money when they already get so much of our city budget. It's ridiculous, and you all should lose your jobs.
My name is Adam Callanan, I can pronounce, zip code 50309, and I live in Ward 3. Yeah, on this one, similar comments before, 1.7 million, so this is even more money going to the police department. We know that the police department already withhold body cam footage. Paul Perezick, this police spokesperson, has gotten in trouble for this, got in trouble with the courts for doing that, and they still haven't released the body cam footage. They said they were going to release as soon as possible from the shooting that happened recently. And yeah, I think it's time for the council, if they're not going to not approve things, at least take more time to question and think about this spending habit that Dana Winger has, because it needs to stop, and we need to be questioning where all this money is, how this money is all being used.
Riley Wilson, Ward 3, 50312. Again, ridiculous. I get that you're all cowards hell-bent on giving the police department as much money as possible, but body cameras don't keep us safe, they already have body cameras, nothing stopping them from either switching their body cameras off, avoiding all accountability, or, you know, just destroying or delaying footage from being released when it actually could be used against them. Again, if you actually did care about the things that were making this community unsafe, you would instead spend this money on things that are actually plaguing the community, such as homelessness, such as, you know, the violence from our own police department. You would be using this money to help with the food insecurity in the food deserts instead of having us rely on community fridges that you also seem hell-bent on destroying for whatever reason. It's clear that you don't give a cap about public safety, but obviously I just wanted to register my dissent. This is fucking ridiculous.
Taylor Weber, Ward 3, 50315. Am I able to ask a question, like genuinely? So I saw seven SWAT officers come in before the meeting, and they're hanging out back waiting if things get disruptive. How much does that cost for them to be here right now?
Do you have any comment to make regarding the?
Yeah, I'm curious, again, because we're taking out loans, right? As someone who myself is in debt from going to college and going through that process, I agree that debt is appropriate for certain things, and this doesn't seem like one of them to me. So I'm again questioning, where is our priorities in the money we're spending of the city? The city is currently allocating 40% of your budget to the cops, to the DMPD, 40%, so that is your biggest priority. And if you Google 40% police, you'll probably find out other problems that are also within the ranks. The other thing I would say is money that's not allocated in that is the time effort of city employees and staff to persecute and go at members and pay out over a million dollars to members of the community that have been persecuted and from their rights infringed on by police helping and abuse within the community. This is a disgrace, and it's disgusting that yet again, as you guys sit here and listen, genuine concerns of the community, that you are choosing to vote unanimously.
Is there another speaker?
I would like to reiterate Taylor's question, how much is that costing the city for those officers?
I'm sorry?
I would like to reiterate Taylor's question, how much is it costing for those officers to be out there?
The subject here is the body cameras, and so you're not germane to the issue here.
No, it's germane.
Not to this issue, thank you.
I'm going to stand here until.
All right, is anybody else want to speak? Germane to this issue.
I'll move item 54, Your Honor.
Item 54 has been moved.
Why are we not allowed to ask the questions?
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
We ask for comments to remain germane to the issue that has happened and whether there are proposed plans or whatever. We take your input, we take your input, which we have done for you at least three times this evening. And so we're, I'm going to ask you to please quiet down, and I'd ask you to sit down. You're being disruptive to the meeting. You are being disruptive to the meeting. I'm going to ask you to sit down, please.
Okay. I'll refer the question to, refer the question over.
My name is Jolene Prescott, and I live at 3013 Third Street. And we, I know that looks like a lot of money, but we need to have accountability of our police, and that's going to start with our cameras. And we need to have a camera on every police person here. Okay? And that is, that is to bring accountability to the police department. Maybe you don't realize it, but that's what that does. So you've got to think about the other side of this. Okay? When they have those on, they got to have the equipment to do it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, takes us to item 55. 55, on the Hamilton Drain Stormwater Improvements Phase II Resolution, Improving the Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate, Receive and File the Bids in Designating the Lowest Responsive Responsible bidder is RW Excavating Solutions, L.C., Dan E. Wilson, Managing Member, $6,196,268.70. Council Communication Number 21-452. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. The general public can file objections on the specifications of the contract for the estimated cost of this, and only those kinds of comments are accepted here.
Payton Schumaker, 50310, Ward 1. Yeah, I wanted to file some kind of objection. Since you let Jolene Prescott speak, you know, after the time that had ended for speaking time, I think you have to technically allow everyone to speak, not on germane issues outside of the speaking time, since you're going to let someone do it, you have to apply the rules evenly to everyone.
Do you have anything to say about the Hamilton Drain?
Yeah, I want to say that you should stop giving so much money to the Des Moines Police Department, and if you're going to let other people break the rules of the city council meeting, then you have to let everyone break the rules of the city council meeting. You weren't, he asked if anyone else.
Payton, I'm going to ask you to sit down, please. Could we have a motion on the Hamilton Drain?
I will be glad to make a motion on item 55. This is certainly going to benefit Ward 2, specifically the Highland Park, Oak Park neighborhoods. It is going to reduce the flooding that we've seen in, or the water that flows into people's basements.
You're right.
55 and 55A, I don't know if I said A.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 56 is dismissing the hearing on the approval of the plans, specifications, form of contract, and engineers estimate on the greenhouse facility structure improvement due to no bids being received. Council Communication Number 21-448.
I'll move 56.
56 has been moved.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that completes the hearings at 54. Item 57 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 21-454. A is a code correction, Locust Street between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. B is a parking modification, East 7th Street between Fremont Street and Buchanan Street. C is a code correction, addition of an intersection of Sixth Avenue and University Avenue to the section relating to pedestrian safety and the use of medians. D is a code correction, East Bell Avenue between Southeast 5th Street and King Avenue. And E is 12th Avenue between Grand Avenue and Locust Street.
I'll move 57, A, B, C, D, and E.
All right, they've been moved.
And wait a second. Readings according to 42A.
Yep.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
58 is amending Section 42-358 relating to notices to abate nuisances. Council Communication Number 21-431. Anybody?
I'll move 58 if there are no other, other comments, Mayor County, thank you.
All right. 58's been moved, anybody?
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
59 is amending Section 34-203 relating to, relating to distributing flowers, trees, and animal life in cemeteries. Council Communication Number 21-433.
I'll move item 59 pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 60 is approving the installation of an all-way stop control at the intersection of East 5th Street and East Grand Avenue. Council Communication Number 21-449. A is amending Section 114-319.03 and 1143270 relating to four-way stop control. And B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the way was requested by council members Voss and Gatto, and requires six votes. Councilmember Voss or Gatto, do you want to?
I'll move item 60, 60A.
And B, too?
Sure. Yeah.
There you go.
I was going to wait and see if we had six votes, I guess, but sure. 60A and B.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 61 is amending Chapter 42, Section 6, Sections 42-246, 42-258, relating to noise regulations. Council Communication 21-440. Counsel?
I'll move item 61 pursuant to Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading. I know staff's also working on other issues related to the same chapter, so we'll see what staff comes up with on that.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 62 is amending Chapter 26 of the municipal code to adopt by reference the 2021 additions of the State Mechanical Code, State Plumbing Code, National Fuel Gas Code, and the 2017 edition of the Liquified Petroleum Gas Code. Council Communication Number 21-458.
I'll move 62 and waive the additional second and third hearings pursuant to Code 42A.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. For everybody, persons wishing to speak tonight under our public speaking, I know we have eight this evening. On the agenda, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, which we have explained earlier on, or they will not be recognized to speak. Each of the eight speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes to make their comments. Keep your own time, because at the end of the two minutes, the clerk's going to announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we're going to immediately move to the next speaker. We want to hear from all residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful of the others' viewpoints that are different from their own. While you may certainly disagree with that viewpoint, I want to remind everyone of the council's rules to provide that any comments that are slanderous can result in that speaker being barred from further comment. The presiding officer, I'll determine whether the comments are slanderous or not. And fair warning, arguing with the presiding officer about the determinations on any matter is not permitted, and doing so, again, will be considered disruptive and result in speaker being barred from further comments and being required to leave the building. So, any rate, let's begin. We've had the modifications of the speakers announcing themselves, so our first speaker this evening is Carol Maher.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher, and I live in Ward 3, in zip code 50312. I haven't lived in Des Moines all my life, unlike most of you on the dais and in this room. I've only lived here for 14 months. But the first thing I did when I moved in was pay for a Des Moines Register subscription. The second was to figure out how our city works, who my representatives are, and how I can participate in city government. But one department seemed to get all the news. But one department seemed to get all the news, the Des Moines Police Department. I've read stories about a city vendor who shares racist and homophobic emails with Police Chief Winger, knowing they will land in a so safe space in his email inbox. A police officer who pepper sprays and arrests a journalist while doing her job. And now, five brave women from the DMPS who have filed a lawsuit against the department and the city for ignoring relentless sexist and inappropriate behavior for decades. Not one bad apple, many, several, lots, bushels full, since the 1990s. The women, at the risk of their careers and personal safety, have stood up, spoken up, and taken a stand against the DMPP. And what do we hear from our elected and appointed officials? Crickets. City Attorney Lester has put a gag order on them. Why? To mitigate legal risk, of course. He can't have our elected officials calling out Chief Winger to respond. We all know that the chief doesn't speak to the public or the media. Now is the time to hear from you. Now is the time to demand accountability from Chief Winger. Now is the time to represent us and not be silent. Finally, I'm not a lawyer, but I do know how mitigate risk in the thousands of dollars and settlements that DMPS puts taxpayers at risk for.
Adam Kellinen.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adam Kellinen. Code 50309, Ward 3. I would like to, I'm happily surprised that I get to thank you all for something. I do appreciate the rule change, it's a good step for the address thing. It's a good step. I don't want to get too specific, but I have been approached about things that set up meetings in inappropriate ways outside of the meetings, and I'm glad that other people won't have to take the same risks to dox themselves as I have, just to speak at these meetings. Yeah, wanted to touch on that. Wanted to go more into stuff with Connolly. I'm glad to say this is the first meeting without Connolly Security being paid to work in armed checkpoint. Some things I wanted to touch on, because I don't think they've quite really been wrapped up yet. It took 75 days, for some reason, for the city to cancel the contract with Connolly. I did the math, and the city paid them about $19,000 in that time. During that time, they knew, were knowingly paying that money to just an awful racist violent organization. And also, there was a three-year contract, and again, I did the math, with two years left in it, that's about $160,000. And I'd like to know where that money's going. I don't know if we're gonna find out, I hope we will, but that's a lot of money, because it could do a lot of good. A few other things, it's just clear the city's really, between the star team that's here and other things, city's putting in place the MPD, city's wasting money because apparently the elected officials are afraid of their people. I don't know why else we have SWAT teams at these meetings. It's bizarre. Beyond that, the deal with Scott Sanders with the Connolly Group was behind closed doors. We don't know what happened, except that Connolly was happy with it, because he was not mad about it, which tells me that it was not rough enough, whatever the deal was. The racist, didn't leave, contract's been broken off happily, it's just bizarre. And also, wanted to just reiterate it back again, Winger knew about this, DMPP knew about this, and signed off on the contract initially. All this was known, and it's weird that it just blew up in Connolly's face and not Winger's face and DMPP's face. And we will see more action out of this in the long term, if not now, eventually, chickens come to roost, whatever you want to say.
Kavya Parsa. Bridget Peterson. Is Bridget here? David Prince.
Hello, David Prince, zip code is 50316. I just wanted to say a few quick words on the proposed ban for waterfowl and geese. As far as the ban goes, I'm okay with most of it, because most people feed them junk food, moldy food, you know, they're leaving junk out to attract rats. What I do, and why I don't need a stipulation of some kind, is I do rescue work. I go out and I pick up the birds. I catch the birds that can fly, that have fishing wire and fishing hooks in them. No one wants to see this in the park. I haven't read anything about the ban giving a stipulation for that, for that kind of work, that I can go out and rescue them. I use food to lure them, so. There's three things I want to be allowed to do. Number one, go out and rescue the birds, straight out. Number two, go out and search for the bird, because it'll be reported at one park, and then I'll find them at another park. And number three is, I monitor. I monitor between 200 and 3,000 geese a day. This is all I do in between my part-time job as a school bus driver. It's a community service. Animal Control and the DNR, they can't catch flying geese like I can. So, there's four other people that do it, they all live in Ankeny, so I'm just asking for some kind of stipulation in this ban, that we can go out and use food to rescue geese, or waterfowl. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Do you know what ward you live in?
No, I don't, sir. 50316, let's see. What's that? 332 on York Street.
Yeah, it'd be...
Ward 2.
Ward 2.
Ward 2, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Deb Franklin.
Deborah Franklin, 1063 Fortio Street, in Josh's Ward. I'm here again to speak about the cybercrime and other horrendous things that have occurred regarding my brother-in-law. Anyway, just to back up a little bit from last time, we believe that he is involved in human trafficking. His wife was divorcing him for constantly viewing porn and being with prostitutes. She ended up dead shortly after she declared such a very suspicious death. Robert Franklin is a very dangerous man. Again, this person has hacked into our MediaCom system, the phone, internet, TV, you know, the TV can kind of live with that, but the other stuff, no. The phone is the worst nightmare. If I call someone, the call may be redirected to another number completely, ring busy, receive a fax noise, or even receive a weird voicemail. Doctors may attempt to call with a report of some sort, but they report they can't get through, or I may not receive them at all. I am even cut off while speaking to doctors. I was once in a car accident and couldn't get through to my husband. This phone hacking goes on all day long. Some days are better than others, but for the most part, all day, every day. I do not use a cellphone, I only use the landline. It should be noted, I have been enduring all of this while continuing to assist my mother-in-law with the abuse her son, Robert Franklin, has inflicted upon her. This abuse has been very draining and wearing, dealing with this abuse. MediaCom tells me they can see the IP address, but that is from a cellphone, but tell me they would need a court order to pull the phone records.
Lori Ann Young.
Good morning, Lori Young, 50310, Ward 1, and I'm also a member of Iowa CCI's racial justice team. Ever since Michael Brown experienced and died from racial violence, police violence in 2014, I have worked with the community to see that racially biased policing and excessive force has ended in Des Moines. And seven years later, I want you to know that I am not, and we are not tired yet. Not only does the data show that blacks are exponentially more likely to be stopped, ticketed, and even arrested than white residents of our city, our Des Moines Police Department's toxic culture and misconduct is deep-seated and long-term. For example, allegations of longstanding sexual harassment and discrimination have finally been exposed by four female officers and one female staffer. The deplorable email communications from Tom Connolly and the Connolly Security Group so easily entertained by our chief of police and his assistants. The pending litigation bought by Dewan Haynes, raising up once again the issue of bias and excessive stops and searches of black residents. The more than $1.25 million paid by the city to settle lawsuits against our DMPP in the last three years, and I could go on. Having said all this, how much longer will the mayor, city council members, and city manager just look away and do nothing? An independent third-party investigation of our DMPP from the top to the bottom is needed now. We want to know when the investigation will begin, and we want to know the findings. Maybe we should just call on the United States Department of Justice for assistance. Council members, I ask you tonight, where is your courage and your conviction? It's time for action, because Des Moines deserves so much better.
Iris Olivares.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Iris Olivares, and my zip code is 50311, Ward 1, and I am a member of Iowa CCI. I am here to speak in regard to the recent excessive force racial profiling and sexual harassment lawsuits against the Des Moines Police Department. As a former healthcare worker, if I were to have body slammed a patient to the floor, there would have been consequences. If I were to have targeted a patient of color and accused them of wrongdoing solely based off the color of their skin and my own biases, there would have been consequences. If someone were to have sexually harassed patients or workers on my floor, there would have been consequences for that person. As you can see, there's a pattern. There are consequences for wrongful actions. However, it seems there's an exception within the police department. Police officers should not be above the law. They need to be held accountable for their actions. It is evident that there's a toxic culture within the Des Moines Police Department, and there needs to be an end to it. We can't continue to keep problematic officers who are a menace to their department and our community. CCI feels strong about having an expansive third-party investigation within the Des Moines Police Department. Scott Sanders, when do you plan on getting this done? And how will you be transparent with the community throughout the process? We're tired of talking, it's time for action.
All right.
I'll move the receiving file, item 63A through H, receiving file, Your Honor.
All right. Ask everybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Those receiving file comments has passed. Brings us to the end of our agenda. And unless anybody has anything else this evening, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.